Call to order, the Maplewood City Council meeting for Monday, January 14th. Good evening and welcome to all of our guests here and for all you watching out there in TV land, happy to be here tonight. We like to start off by talking a little bit about headlines in Maplewood. I think the headline for a lot of us was last week, we had the State of the City address over at Maplewood Community Center. It was a fantastic event. We gave away some great awards to business leaders within the community who are doing great things. Mr. Jenkins did a fantastic job of emceeing the event. I think he's got a future in emceeing and perhaps game show hosting if the current profession doesn't work out. But it was a lovely event and we had a great crowd and just great energy in the room. You know, as we all know, we're going through some, going through some change right now, but I think change for the positive in the long run, as much as we are having to deal with that in the short run. I thought we handled it really well. I actually really enjoyed the format of us all getting to talk a little bit about what we've been up to as a city and I thought Mr. Sharon did a great job of sort of assigning us topics that we all are passionate about personally as well. So I was really happy to be there and happy to be part of it and really appreciate all the work that goes into it from the staff and all the folks that were able to attend. Any thoughts from you guys on the event beyond that?
Well, it was packed, so we have to say people wanted to hear about it. I disagree with you however, I don't like the part where we all get to talk. I listen to the mayor talk and hang out with people. So, you know, I do what I have to do, but that part we don't ever repeat if we don't need to.
You did a wonderful job.
Oh, sure, thanks. As I like to say about those things, it's over. But I really appreciate how many people came and how people really interacted from table to table and stuff and hung around for a while afterwards and it proves that it's a really community-based thing and people really look forward to it and appreciate it. It's fun to be part of it, actually.
From my perspective, I think it's an important opportunity for us to reflect back on what happened over the last year because sometimes there are so many things that happen that it's easy to forget about them and really I think it was a remarkable year for our city and I really think that the, all the people that showed up, it was a packed room, really appreciated hearing that and knowing what's going on in Maplewood.
Yeah, I think the only, the only feedback I have for improvement is next year I'd like to have a little more time to just talk to people. I think there's so many great leaders and community folks in the room that it would be great to have a little bit more time to just connect with folks, but you know, I think that's one of those things too where it can't be a six-hour event either, so we've got to balance out how much we spend on that. But I just, that's the only thing I regret is I just have a little more time to connect with folks. But it's just a great event and really appreciate, again, all the hard work that goes into it. So with that, we'll move on here to the Pledge of Allegiance and I think we have a special guest, my son Zach, who is going to lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Zach, great job.
Apple tree, public speaking.
Ms. Sint, will you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
I'm sorry, Acting Mayor Smith.
I'm a council member.
And Councilmember Abrams.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to quickly read our mayor's address on protocol. We don't have a public hearing tonight, but because we've got some, it's probably good for all of us to hear. Welcome to the meeting of the Maplewood City Council. It's our desire to keep all discussions civil as we work through difficult issues tonight. If you're here for a public hearing or to address the city council, please familiarize yourself with the policies and procedures and rules of civility, which are located near the entrance. Sign in with the city clerk before addressing the council. At the podium, please state your name and address clearly for the record. All comments, questions shall be posed to the mayor and council. The mayor will then direct staff as appropriate to answer questions to respond to comments. With that, may I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's moved by Abrams, seconded by Juneman to approve today's agenda. Is there any discussion, Ms. Juneman?
One council presentation, recycle your holidays, we're still doing it.
Excellent.
I have several. I'd like to add attendance at the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce Legislative Dinner, Bachmann's Indoor Marketplace, and then the remodel and reopening, I guess grand remodel is maybe a better way to say it, of the Cub Foods over on County Road B and Rice.
I'm going to add one on YouTube.
Approval of the minutes.
Wait, we haven't boarded on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake.
Sorry.
So we have a motion and a second on the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing ayes all, the agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the manager workshop minutes from December 10th.
Second.
It's moved by Juneman, seconded by Abrams to approve the minutes from the December 10th City Council Workshop. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes all, the minutes are approved. Do I hear a motion on point two?
I'll move the December 10th City Council minutes.
Second, and I have a typo to per-
Great, hearing moved by Abrams, seconded by Juneman to approve the minutes of the December 10th City Council Meeting Minutes. Ms. Juneman?
Packet page number three, actually page two of the agenda, I mean of the minutes, the very last line, it should say to request, not to requested. I know it's a picket, but-
That's, well, that's what we're here for. Getting it right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the December 10th, 2018 City Council Meeting Minutes, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes all, the minutes are passed. Moving on to appointments and presentations, we'll start here with administrative presentations and our council calendar, council calendar update from our esteemed city manager, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Smith. This item is informational and it's intended to provide the council a snapshot of what we have on upcoming agendas and some of the things that we're working on. So for the January 28th workshop, we have a scheduled update on the tree program and how we're progressing with that. And then we're going to hear from the Urban Roots Gardening Program who are looking at taking over the property that we had the community gardens on that didn't happen. So that, that will be a presentation there. On February 11th, we had some other things scheduled, but we will be moving those so that you can do the council candidate interviews. So we could maybe do one of these things, so just have to be a little flexible on that one. Then on February 25th, we are going to hear from XL on the gas main replacement project, which I have indicated to you before, is it going to be a major undertaking from one boundary of the city to the other on County Road B. They're replacing a major gas line and it's going to be very disruptive. We're going to have a lot of delays and detours. It's not going to be fun, but we'll get through it and it's for a good thing. We need to have gas mains. Looking at some of the things that we're working on based on comments from the council, the Tobacco 21, we had that, we were going to look at that at the last meeting in January, but I think that might be better suited to when we have a full contingent on our council, so we will reschedule that. As I mentioned, that we're going to look at the tree program on the 28th. We have not, I have not yet reached out to Ms. Lozario to invite her in to talk about facility changes. However, Mr. Martin and myself did meet with the facilities folks at the school district. They came here and they gave us a snapshot of some of the projects that they'll be working on. So we will like to, we would like to get her in and so you can hear more about that from her. We are looking at a pedestrian safety plan for some of our intersection. That study is very comprehensive and will take some time, but Mr. Love is working on that with his staff. The sign removal on vacant buildings is going back to the design review board, I think, tomorrow night, whatever night they meet, they meet on Tuesdays? Yeah, tomorrow night, I think, or next Tuesday. And then you asked for a follow-up on the on-street parking ordinance and how that's going in June, so we're going to give it kind of a six-month window to see how that's going. And with that, now is the time, if there's some other things that you'd like us to take a look at, to bring those forward.
Ms. Abrams.
Thank you. I appreciate that we're going to be talking about the, let's see, the strategic plan with the police department. You know, one thing that we did at our last council meeting was adopt the new ordinance about the repeat nuisances. And what I'd like to do is maybe suggest that we do a follow-up after maybe six months so that we can hear back, how is that working? You know, it's a new ordinance and I always like to know, let's circle back and see, are we accomplishing what we set out to accomplish? So some kind of report maybe in June?
Yeah, we could do that with the on-street parking ordinance.
That would be good.
Okay.
And also, I know that we've got the tree program coming up and that was something that I brought forward. I'd like our discussion about the tree program to also encompass the latest awful, was it EHB or something?
EAB.
With the firs and the spruce trees?
Oh, I didn't know about that.
That just came out and they removed them from Menards and from Home Depot because it was another infestation that was being brought in and can jeopardize our-
What's it called?
Spruce trees. EDH or, there's three initials.
I know that, E something H. Okay. It's fir trees or spruce?
Fir trees, spruce trees.
Yeah, it was in the wreaths and the trees.
It was in the wreaths and the trees that were brought in from, I think, North Carolina.
Yes.
And they're concerned about that and it's, you know, I think it's, it's just more evidence that we need to start planning ahead as to these infestations and planting things that are going to be more hardy because otherwise our landscape here is going to be decimated.
Okay. We can add that to the report.
Thanks. On the same vein, as long as I'm talking about bad tree news, there's actually a fungus that's now present in Minnesota that affects almost all spruce trees, even the ones that are supposed to be disease-resistant, including the black hill spruce, which has been one of our substitutions. So there's some information available from the university, I know about that, so at least to give people a heads up and then possibly in our own plantings to watch what we plant. Pretty soon we have to plant plastic trees if we don't want them to catch something.
And Ms. Coleman, if you don't have a date tonight, that's okay. If you do, that's great, but if we could get an idea, timeline on when we're going to follow up on Sandy Lake, I know the plumbos are here tonight and I just want to make sure that we're keeping on track with that.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I indicated this to you in an email a couple of weeks ago, but it's our intention with working with the St. Paul Regional Water Service to have a neighborhood meeting and let them report back to the neighbors and to us at the same time, if you can be there. We're looking at a meeting in mid-February. And part of the need to kind of push this out a little bit is we've asked them for some pretty difficult or complex issues, the pollution control, that was really kind of a new one, the dust control issue, and so they're doing some additional work on that. So we granted them a little more time, but I did communicate to the neighbors, a couple of them, that it will likely be at a neighborhood meeting in mid-February.
Thank you, yeah. I appreciate everyone's hard work on that, I know it's been a lot. Anything else that we might want to add to the list here?
No, thanks.
Great. Let's move on to council presentations, Ms. Juneman?
Well, you know, if it's good once, it's good five times. Even though the holidays are long over, I guess not so long, but always a long over, is you can see if you're here tonight, the box in the lobby speaks volumes. That's the second large box that's been filled with old holiday lights. So if you still have some hanging around, we're doing this until the end of January and obviously it's paying off. It's any lights that you want to just get rid of because you're tired of them or if they don't work, they are recycled, they are shipped off and totally dismantled and every piece that can be recycled is for reuse, is, that is done. So it's a good way for you to get rid of them and not put them in the trash. And again, it's through the end of the month.
Thank you. I would like you to know too, that when I took my lights down, I thought of you as I was taking them down the other day. Yes. Ms. Abrams.
Thank you. I attended the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce Legislative Dinner. Governor Walz was the featured speaker. There was also a panel discussion with the House and Senate leadership and I have to say, I left that event feeling very optimistic that at least, certainly the responses sounded like there was a real focus on what the legislature can do to make things better in our state and I left and I was optimistic. Now, I'm also a realist and so I'm holding out my judgment to see really how they are able to work together, but I certainly did like what I hear and that doesn't always happen when you go to an event like that in terms of, you know, infighting or whatever. They seemed to really be on point with trying to find common ground and so I found that very exciting and I thought Governor Walz did a very nice job in terms of his presentation as well, very optimistic about what's to come.
I also wanted to alert people to something that's happening in our city that's new. Bachmann's over here on White Bear Avenue is doing an indoor farmer's market and the next two are February 2nd and March 2nd. And what they did, I just went to the one in January, and what they're doing is they have cleaned out the greenhouses and they brought in, in partnership with the St. Paul Farmer's Market, they brought in eggs and cheeses and jams and their pulled pork sandwich was very good, I had one of those myself, but they brought in a lot of the people from the St. Paul Farmer's Market and there's two remaining. There's also music, so it's a great place to bring kids. February Saturday, February 2nd, it starts at 9:00 a.m. and then Saturday, March 2nd, again, it starts at 9:00 a.m. It's also on the Bachmann's website, but it was a really nice event to have in our local Maplewood Bachmann. So check that out if you need to get out of the cold, not that this winter's been all that bad, but it certainly is nice to be in a greenhouse setting and enjoying some of those things. Also, Councilmember Juneman and I both went to the reopening, well, they never did close, but the big remodel reveal of the Cub Foods over on County Road B and Rice and boy, did they do a nice job. I would encourage everyone to go over there because when you walk in, they have a popcorn stand that makes all of this custom popcorn. They were giving out free samples and I will admit, Councilmember Juneman and I did enjoy some of that popcorn. It was a really nice ribbon cutting and right before we did the ribbon cutting, out in the parking lot, Hormel donated 5,200 Cure 81 hams to Second Harvest Heartland here in Maplewood, so that was really kind of cool. It was a nice commitment that they made to remodel that store and it looks great. So I would encourage all of you to get out and see that too. And besides, it was a fun event, wasn't it?
Yes, it was fun.
That's great. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the city's YouTube page and the work that Mr. Sharon and his team have been doing. I have been enjoying the videos, they've been coming out all year, but after the State of the City address, I went back just to look at them again because we talked a little bit about those videos and there were a couple that I hadn't seen yet. And just to see them all in one place was pretty remarkable and the content that that team is putting out on a shoestring budget is pretty awesome and there's, I got a little distracted in my day job the other day and ended up spending more time than I should have watching Maplewood videos, but you know, you got to take a break now and then. But I just really want to commend the team because they're such great quality. The team of the fire department going through their driving training was, that video was just awesome. There may or may not have been a few cones run over, but nonetheless, it was, it was really great. So I just want to commend the team and appreciate the rest of the staff who are making themselves available for these videos as they come out, so thank you. Great. With that, we'll move on to a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, speaking of our staff being awesome.
Another example. Thank you. The City of Maplewood has received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which in finance lingo is called the CAFR, for the year ended December 31st, 2017, from the Government Finance Officers Association. Now here's the really cool part, this is the 38th year in a row that we've received this award. So that says a lot for the integrity of our finance staff. Over the years, we have done a really good job. So this, this award is established for excellence in financial reporting, it started in 1945 and it was a way for local governments and the state to go beyond the minimum requirements and accounting principles to do more than that. And we obviously have succeeded in achieving that goal. So with that, Acting Mayor Smith, I would ask you to present the certificate of achievement to Ms. Pulis and I believe Joe Rubus here too, any other staff here? Any other staff here?
Do you have a dolly?
Joe, do you want to come up?
Mr. Acting Mayor and council members, I'd like to thank you for this award on behalf of the Finance Department. I also wanted to mention once again that by participating in this program and receiving this award on an annual basis, it provides assurance to our citizens and all of our stakeholders that the city's financial statements and reports meet the highest standards for transparency and accuracy. We could not do this without the help of the City Council, who establishes the policy direction that guides us day-to-day in formulating our reports. And it could not be done without the help of the entire Finance Department. Everyone works very hard on this report, and I'd like to especially remember or point out Joe Rube, the Assistant Finance Director, who supervises all the accounting operations and works very hard on this report as well. Thank you again.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
That brings us to one of my favorite things that we do here, and it usually makes me cry, so I apologize in advance if I get a little misty. Seriously. It's a presentation of life-saving awards. And is this going to be Chief Nadeau?
Yes.
All right. Your show, Chief.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, members of the council. It's another great night here in Maplewood, one where we took a tragedy with the team effort of a lot of different people and made a difference in saving the life of a 12-year-old child in one of our schools. And so, at this time, I'd like to call up all of the different people who were involved so they can stand up here as I read this award submission. So we'll start with Maplewood Middle School staff members Ty Evans and Judy Lawlier, if you guys could come up. Maplewood Police Officer Glenn McCarty. Maplewood Police Sergeant Kevin Johnson. Maplewood Firefighter Paramedics Mike Struff, Nick Danley, Andy Baumann, and Sam Perry, Jody Helwig, and Mike Molesky. Maplewood Firefighter EMT Ken Nielsen. And Maplewood Battalion Chief Sean Conway. I'll ask our EMS chief, Mike Mondur, to come up and help me present this. And I'd also like our fire chief to come up, Steve Lukin. Okay, I'm told that he is on a call right now.
Yes.
That's kind of how emergency services works, so. The summary is, on November 6th, 2018, Maplewood Public Safety Personnel were dispatched to Maplewood Middle School for the report of a 12-year-old female student who was in cardiac arrest. Staff members Judy Lawlier and Ty Evans immediately activated the EMS system, began CPR, and retrieved a school AED. Maplewood Police arrived to find Ms. Lawlier performing CPR on 12-year-old Jayla Campo. Ms. Lawlier and Police Sergeant Johnson continued CPR until additional police and EMS personnel arrived. Maplewood Police and fire staff worked together to deliver chest compressions and assist Jayla's breathing. After administering cardiac medications and performing defibrillation, Maplewood Public Safety Personnel located a pulse. After re-establishing a pulse, Maplewood EMS Personnel further assessed and provided medications to stabilize Jayla's condition. EMS Personnel ultimately transported Jayla to an area hospital. Statistically, those who suffer from cardiac arrest have less than a 10% chance of survival. November 6th was an example of all of the links of the chain of survival coming together. The cardiac arrest was recognized early, and the emergency response system was activated immediately. Immediate, high-quality CPR was initiated by Maplewood Middle School staff. A public access defibrillator was available and employed rapidly. Advanced life support was at the patient's side within four minutes of the 911 call. The actions taken by those present, including staff members Lawlier and Evans, Sergeant Johnson and Officer McCarty, firefighter paramedic Struff, Perry, Baumann, Helwig, Molesky, and firefighter EMTs Danley and Nielsen, and Battalion Chief Conway are believed to have saved Jayla's life on that day. As the council may notice, our Public Safety Staff, working alongside our citizens, are continuing to do the important work that is saving lives. We wish Jayla and her family continued good health and happiness, and commit to continuing to train and respond in a way that gives our citizens the best possible opportunity to survive full and healthy lives. But a round of applause for our heroes. So first of all, we have a citizens' award and citation for our two citizens. Police Officer Glenn McCarty will be getting the Police Department's Life-Saving Award. And Sergeant Kevin Johnson will also be receiving the Police Department's Life-Saving Award. All right. Nick Danley will be receiving a Life-Saving Award, as will Kent Nielsen. Kent, if you could come up. Mike Struff. The rest of our staff was here, but as they so often have to do, left to answer emergency calls. Unfortunately, the person whose life was saved was not able to be here tonight. But again, we would point out that we're doing a lot of work in our community, not only with our firefighter medics, but our firefighter medics have been very busy training our police staff so that we can get them up to a higher level of response and first responder. And as recently as last Saturday, we're working with our community to make sure that they have the skills that they need to be effective in these situations, both with high-quality CPR and defibrillation. So thank you again to all who are involved, our citizens, our police officers, and our firefighter, paramedic, and EMT staff for another job well done.
Oh, we're supposed to go in, are we going to hold him in the picture now? Yeah.
All right, look at me first, then you can look at whoever else is up here. All right, and then family ones come up. All right. Ooh, hang on, hang on. All right, you're first, look at him first.
Thank you.
All right, look at her now. Okay, thanks, all right. You guys got the hang of this, right?
Keep smiling.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, you just thought of it 18 different ways. Councilman Juneman, that's right. I've had years to practice.
I do too.
Mayor, can I just say something?
Yeah, Ms. Juneman.
Thank you. As long as I've been here, which is a long time, these never get old. It is a thrill. It's just amazing to me.
Yeah, as a council member, I'm so proud, but as a dad of a young boy, just the gift that that sort of life-saving action gives is just, it's overwhelming. Get my stuff together, yeah. All right, on to the fun stuff.
Sure.
So much. Great, so we are now at F5 to discuss council resignations and vacancies. Just to give you an idea of how this is going to go, we have to approve a couple of resolutions, recognizing the two vacancies that we have on the council. And we will talk through those, one for the mayor and one for the council member Zhang's or Representative Zhang now's seat. And then we are going to go through a process to appoint a mayor this evening, and then we will swear in that mayor. And then we'll discuss next steps for what will then be created another council opening, and then the next steps for filling those council openings. Did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think so.
Excellent. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the first resolution.
I'll move the resolution, second resignation and declaring a vacancy in the office of council member.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Abrams, second by Juneman, resolution filling the vacancy and calling for the special election in the office of a council member. Do we read this resolution?
I don't think we have to.
Okay. Great. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes all, the resolution is accepted. Do you have your motion on the second resolution?
Resolution accepting, excuse me, the resignation and declaring a vacancy in the office of mayor.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Juneman and a second from Abrams to accept the resolution, filling the vacancy, or I'm sorry, accepting resignation and declaring a vacancy in the office of the mayor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing ayes all, the resolution is accepted. So we now have two vacancies. I believe we will move on to the mayoral vacancy first. So for this process, we will accept, begin by accepting nominations from the council. We'll have a discussion, meaning each person who's interested in being mayor will give some comments, a time for question and answer, and then we'll move on to making a decision. Fair enough? Excellent. Do we have a preference on, well, first we'll need to make nominations. And it is okay to nominate ourselves.
I'll verify that.
I'm going to nominate myself for the appointment of mayor.
Excellent. And seconds are not needed here. And I will nominate myself for the appointment of mayor.
Thanks, guys.
You want to make three of a kind?
No.
All right.
Absolutely not.
Excellent. So with that, do you have a preference of going first or second to?
Ask questions.
You can go. How are we going to vote on two different?
I thought we were going to have some discussion.
We are.
Best now.
Okay, we can discuss.
Or ask questions, or make statements, or however you want to do it.
Well, I thought we would each make a statement and then ask questions.
Sounds good.
Thought we would chat.
Okay, so.
God knows I need to hear.
Unless there's a, I'm sensing consternation if we need to do something else first.
There are two nominations out, and that's proper to have two nominations? Okay. Then I'll defer, you could go first.
You know, as we've talked a lot, I think we find ourselves in a difficult but a good situation. We have a mayoral vacancy created because we had a very talented mayor who got asked to take a bigger job. And I think that job is going to have incredibly good impacts on the East Metro and on Maplewood going forward. So, you know, as much as this is a difficult situation to be in, I think it's also, in the long run, going to be very good. I feel strongly that however this plays out tonight, we've got very good people on this council who respect and care for each other, and we are going to be in a good place. I think we each bring some different things to the table, and what I'm hoping we do tonight as we discuss this process is really think about what is it those things, what are those things that we bring to the table? And what are the things that are going to best serve in a mayoral role? From my perspective, I think where my strengths lie is in my ability to communicate effectively on a broader scale, to be able to not only set a vision, but also rally people around that vision and drive for excitement and engagement into that vision. I've got a strong background in business, I have my MBA, I've worked in the corporate world for 20 years, and I'm able to work well with business people, as well as connect easily with residents as well. That's something I've always been comfortable with, but definitely gotten more comfortable with over the last few years in my role in the council. To me, the mayor is first and foremost, you know, as Mr. Beatty put it earlier, kind of the first among equals on the council. It's about, it is about running quality meetings, it's about making it fun to be on this council in some ways. It's also about making sure that we get business done, and we do it in a respectful and efficient manner. And most of my day job is running meetings. I'm pretty comfortable in that process of balancing, getting a job done during the meeting and also doing it in a way that's enjoyable, because otherwise, it's rather soul-sucking to go through that process if you don't have a little joy in what you do. But from a vision perspective, I think, you know, we've been lucky in that all of us sitting at this day has have had moments where we've brought great things to bear. I think for me, some places where I've demonstrated that vision since being on the council has been some of the work we've been doing around race and policing and trying to make some progress on that front, partnering with the police department and residents to start to have some of those difficult discussions. It was a bit of a risk for us to do that, but I'm really glad we did, and I think it's taking us in some really solid directions. I think also, I've had the ability to just impact more on how do we, how do we talk about and tell the story of Maplewood? It's, you know, my day job is very much about telling stories through marketing about businesses, and that has translated well to this job. So as I look at my, at the potential of me being mayor, I think really what I'm looking to double down on is that ability to communicate both on a broader scale and communicate one-on-one and drive that sort of engagement and excitement so that Maplewood really is on the map. I think it's one of the challenges we've had over the last 15 years or so, is we're having to remind folks, we've had a few rough patches over the years, and I think getting past that brand, making sure people understand that Maplewood's a great place to live and a great place to do business with a responsive city government that is here to help and here to really be committed to make the city better. And so that's what I'm bringing to the table, I think. Good quality meeting management, strong business background, and solid communicator. But like I said, if at the end of this, I'm still a council member, I'm going to be an enthusiastic and excited council member. You know, this is, this is a situation where, in my mind, we have no bad choices, and that's the best place to be. So appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't consider myself to be a politician, I am a public servant. I was invited to run for a council seat by Mayor Nora Slawick five years ago, and if someone would have told me 10 years ago that I would be seated up here as a council member, I would have, I would have been shaking my head and saying, no, I didn't really see myself in that regard. But I am a public servant, and I did get a wonderful opportunity to serve our community. The last five years on this council, I've had a great opportunity to sit with some very committed individuals up here at the council. This is not an easy job. We certainly don't do it for the pay. We commit quite a bit of time to this, and I look at my calendar each week and I think about the number of meetings and the things that I do because I care about this city. I care about where we've been and where we're going. I have been certainly not afraid of some of the issues that we faced over this last five years. I've helped this council, I think, shape our future as to where we're going, and I haven't shied away from those difficult decisions to pull away from a cable commission that was no longer serving our community towards our own communication department here at the city so that we can talk to people and tell people who we are and what are, what wonderful things we have going in our city. I'm excited about where we've been, but I'm even more excited about where I think we're headed. We have a great opportunity with this North End to revision the Maplewood Mall. That is one of my number-one priorities. We've got the potential, especially now with Mayor Slawick being at the Metropolitan Council, to really see some transportation improvements here in our city. And I really think that that is going to be instrumental in making sure that our North End keeps vibrant, because we all know that retail's changed and that we have to be as nimble as we possibly can. And I am very excited about where we're going with this North End study that we're working on. We have to be able to revision and be creative with ourselves. I spoke about that at our State of the City address and talked about what my vision for that mall is and what we can do with that, because I think we have to be prepared as a council if we're going to need to do some possible rezoning. We need to be able to work with our businesses. We need to be able to work with the mall owners and come up with a new creative plan, that that's going to be a vibrant part of our city for the next 25 years. My strengths, I've been a practicing attorney for 35 years, and I certainly have run my share of meetings, made my share of presentations, and believe that I have the commitment and the dedication to serve as the mayor. And, you know, Nora Slawick has some pretty big shoes to fill here, and I certainly would like the opportunity to step in and build upon the things that we have developed over the last five years that I've been on the council and see where we can really take our city in the next two years. This is an important two years, and we have some wonderful opportunities out there, and I'm excited about the prospects of our city. We've got a very dedicated staff, and, you know, our staff really are the people that make everything work. We're the ones, we get to be the policymakers, and we get to dream big about what we think should be happening in Maplewood. And then our staff are the ones that really execute it. You saw tonight that our finance department received another award. You know, we've been working really hard with our finance department to bring down our debt, to be really fiscally responsible. And that's something that I certainly would continue to take a look at, because we're all taxpayers, my neighbors, my friends in our community, we're all taxpayers, and we really have to make sure that we spend wisely and that we really get the biggest bang for our buck that we possibly can. You know, I think Maplewood has developed now a very positive reputation in, on the east side of the metro. Pretty much everyone knows that we are the greenest city, I think, not just only on the east metro, but in the entire metro area because of some of the amazing things that Councilmember Juneman has done. I think that in terms of Councilmember Smith and his connections with our Police Advisory Commission, I think that has been an amazing contribution, and I certainly appreciate his insights. And, you know, it's time, I think, I'm excited about what we will do over the next two years, and I too share in the fact that I think that we can move forward in a real positive way. And it is true that, I said this during the workshop, that we are in this predicament, because two members from our council were appointed to other positions where they have even a bigger role, Nora up at the Metro Council, Metropolitan Council, and then two up at the legislature. And I think that that speaks very well of the quality of citizens. I'm excited to work with the two new council members, I believe that we're going to be appointing in February. And I think that we've got great possibilities, and I'm excited about it. So, thank you, everyone.
Now do I get to ask questions, since I'm not, since I'm not playing this game? I have two questions for each of you. First of all, I'd like each of you to tell me, tell us, you listed your qualifications, but I would like each of you to tell me which you think your strongest point that will help you in being the person who chairs a meeting and helps us to move issues along. I love being able to make up the questions, this is fun.
Do you repeat it one more time?
Your strongest point or skill that will enable you to be moving the meeting along, keeping us on task, and making sure we attend to all the issues? In 25 words or less.
Okay. I think that my strongest skill is that I have the ability to focus on an agenda and to get accomplished what we need to accomplish. I'm certainly not a grandstander in terms of seeking attention. I know what we need to accomplish. I certainly have, I think, the time. I did talk with Mayor Slawick about some of the things that she did that led her to be a successful mayor, and one of those things was meeting with City Manager Coleman on Monday mornings to go over the agenda for the meeting that night. I'm, I can be direct, I can be very respectful, and I can move an agenda and keep things organized and focused.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I think, I think from my perspective, it is a skill that I've been building that is probably my strongest skill here. I will admit, I am a bit of a grandstander, and I do, I do, my natural place is to sort of try to get attention. And I was, I was speaking with someone the other day who asked me the question, what has the council, what has being on the council taught you outside of the council? Specifically around, around what I do in the day. And I said, one of the best things for me has been the fact that I have to turn my light on before I talk, because I have learned a lot about how much I think about what I might say and change it before I'm actually called on. And this has been a big lesson for me in the last couple of years of trying to slow down a little bit, think about what I say before I say it, and then, and then say something. I've actually found myself in meetings at work going, I need to turn my light on and call on myself in a few minutes. So I think, to me, it's that my natural state is to, is to sort of drive and keep things moving and whatnot. I think the skill that I've been working on that complements that well is becoming a better listener and, and doing less of my natural state, which tends to be waiting to talk, and doing a better job of slowing down, listening, learning from you guys, which I've learned a lot. Yeah, no, it's not. You know, it's, it's helpful when I can do that, because, you know, as my wife and I say, we make better decisions together than either of us do individually, and I feel that weight very much on the dais as well.
Now you're going to love this one. I labored over this one. I would like each of you, in thinking about the other, what does that other person have to offer as mayor?
And now I get to go first, right? As I just said, I've learned a lot from you, and I've learned a lot from Mary Lee. And I think what I value tremendously about Mary Lee is her deep expertise in, in how city government should run when they're ideal. And I think her commitment to really sound government based in, in good, good legal advice and protecting the city from, from a, as, as a lawyer would protect the city, I think Mary Lee takes that approach to being on the council, which I really appreciate. And I think she has also done a really great job of setting a deep keel in fiscal responsibility and making sure that we are holding ourselves accountable, even when it doesn't seem like a lot of money. You know, she is the one that is continually pushing us to bring our debt down, control our spending, and be very thoughtful about that. And I think those things are, because sometimes she's alone on those, and I really respect the fact that she has such a deep keel when it comes to those things, because again, I think it pushes us to make better decisions. I think those are the, probably the two most important.
And now, it's your turn.
One of the things that I really appreciate about Brian is his ability to try to get to the best result. And I think that I really appreciate that he many times tries to work with consensus, but then recognizes that sometimes there won't be consensus. And under those circumstances, he tries to get to the best result, and that includes bringing in other opinions, other people, thinking about making decisions from many perspectives.
Thank you.
That was really nice. Now I have to look at the attorney, how, what do we do next? Well, we had two nominations, so, and I'm not the chair here, so how do, how do we handle this, sir?
Yeah, so we, do you have?
Well, I think unless there's more discussion, it's time to vote.
So we take them one at a time, correct?
I, I would just say too, if, I mean, if anybody has any other comments or questions, I would, I would be open to that. Got yours out?
I did. Unless you want to go on for a long time, and I don't think you do.
Not really, no. I just want to make sure everyone's had the opportunity to, I'm comfortable if we want to ask questions of each other, too. I, I don't know if you have any, but I don't.
We've worked together for three years.
All right, so now the question is how we want to handle voting. I think, I think we should all three vote. If you, if you are statutorily precluded for voting for yourself, you may want to consider another vote. Right?
We're not going to draw straws, I'm telling you, we're not.
Well, Mr. Bear, I mean, I've made that suggestion for this, for this reason. Again, going back to something we talked about before, I think it's important for this process to result in a certain legitimacy for the, for the elected person. And in that, in that context, I would like to see whoever emerges getting two votes, rather than one vote and two abstentions. I just think that that lends greater legitimacy when you've got three electors, having at least two votes is a clear majority.
So if we have two, two votes, then what do we do? Please don't tell me we go to the dumb state law.
Sorry, I didn't understand the question, what?
I said, what happens if we have two incidents of two votes?
Well, there's, there'd be three votes.
No.
You can't vote for yourself.
You can't vote for yourself, so there can't be three votes.
Well, I, I mean, I guess my suggestion would be that each of you, there are two nominations, you don't have to take them separately, that you vote on them at the same time. Vote for whichever of the persons nominated each of you wish to vote for.
I just got lost, yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
So if, so if we vote for each other, that cancels it out.
Right.
The only, the only issue.
Right, it is, it is.
The only issue is that if one of us abstains, that could throw a monkey wrench in that process. So.
What happens if I abstain?
You can't.
You can't. We'll send you to your room. Thank you. Mary Lee, do you have a thought on this?
Yeah, let's ask the lawyer.
Yeah.
The other lawyer.
Yeah. You know, it's really a difficult question, I mean.
I don't, I don't think I understand what you said.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, you do not need to take separate votes on the nominations. You've got two nominations on the floor. Each of you vote for whichever of those people you would like to see elected.
So, so we vote, we just go down the line?
Right, right.
Say a name?
Right. That's, that's the way it's going to play out.
Okay.
Who starts?
Then it should start with her.
Oh, I'm not starting.
It would be more dramatic if we went this way.
Does that make sense?
Well, let's do it this way, let's go this way. If Mary Lee abstains, I'll abstain. If Mary Lee votes for me, I'll vote for Mary Lee.
Okay.
Brian, I'll vote for you.
Mary Lee, I'd be happy to vote for you.
Kathleen?
You know, why do I sit with these people? Can anybody tell me? I always have chickens shit way out of that one. Love you.
Ooh, I would want her shoulders right here.
No.
For this, I went for another four years. I vote for Mary Lee.
Excellent. Thank you, Kathy. And we are not elected to make easy decisions, so.
Well, you think I know that by now, wouldn't you?
Yeah. Congratulations, Mary Lee. And so with that, I would say.
Mr. Mayor, there's a resolution that you should adopt. It's one of the ones that's been prepared with a blank, but what it does is, Mary Lee Abrams' name will be filled in, and it declares that she's been elected, and it sets up importantly the fact that there will be a special election in two years.
So I should, because I was the last voter, I should read it? Whereas the Maplewood City Council has received the written resignation of Mayor Nora Slawick effective on January 7, 2019, and whereas the City Council accepted the resignation and declared a vacancy in the office of mayor on January 14, 2019, whereas Minnesota State Statute 412.02 subdivision 2A allows the City Council to appoint a person to fill the vacancy, and whereas Minnesota Statute 412.02 subdivision 2A further allows this appointment to serve until a successor is elected and qualified at the next regular city election. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Maplewood, Minnesota that the council appoints Mary Lee Abrams to fill the vacancy in the office of mayor, who will serve until a successor is elected and qualified. A special election to fill the vacancy for the balance of the mayoral term will be held at the city general election to be conducted on November 3, 2020. A special primary will be conducted on August 11, 2020 if more than two candidates file for the office of mayor adopted by the City Council of the City of Maplewood on January 14, 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Juneman. With that, I- With that, I would...
We do swearing in it.
Yeah, so I'd like, do we have to amend the agenda?
You should second, this needs to be adopted.
Oh, okay.
So it needs a second.
I will second this, resolution filling the vacancy. So we have a motion by Juneman and a second by Smith.
And Mary Lee should not vote.
What?
Mary Lee should not vote.
She has to abstain.
Thank you. Resolution filling the vacancy and calling for a special election of the office of the mayor. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, that special election will be held in conjunction with the general election in 2020?
Yes.
Correct. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Hearing ayes, all, is there an abstention? One abstention. Please note, one abstention. Hearing ayes, all and one abstention. The resolution is carried. So now do we...
Should swear in the mayor.
All right. Do we amend the agenda first, or we just do it?
I'd say just do it.
All right. I like that idea. So with that, Ms. Sint, I would ask you to please swear in our new mayor. Mayor Abrams, and I will turn it over to you.
I want to thank both of my colleagues. This is not easy.
Let's put it this way, I had a lot of gray hair when I came in here, but I've got more now.
Kind of taking a moment here.
Please do. Do you want me to take this item for you?
Next, we're gonna do the consent agenda. No, is that, I'm sorry.
There's another resolution.
Do I have a motion for the resolution accepting resignation and declaring a vacancy in the office of council member?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And, Madam Mayor, just to be clear, the name that's vacant in there is yours.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm a little bit off my game here.
Well, understandably...
She doesn't know whether she's coming or going.
Understandably. What just happened is because Mary Lee Abrams was just sworn in as mayor, that is an incompatible office with the one she got sworn into 20 minutes ago. And so that acts as an automatic resignation for the seat as a council. So what you've now done is declare a vacancy in two council seats, and that process that you talked about at the work session will play out with regard to both of those seats.
Do we need to do anything further in terms of adopting that process to fill the two vacancies?
I think we had talked about discussing what that process would be just one more time in this setting, since we've only talked about it in the workshop.
Okay.
And then sort of tabling the appointment pending that process. Is that correct, Mr. Beatty?
That's fine, yeah.
Basically, at this point, what we have are two vacancies on the council. We've got Tu Jang's seat, and we have my seat that I just vacated. My head feels like it's spinning a little bit, but we'll get through this. And so therefore, council, I mean, City Manager Coleman.
What's her name?
We will get through this.
Mayor Abrams, I have never seen you flustered before. This is a first.
I was a bit unexpected, but, I mean...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so...
I would be happy to talk about the schedule, which was discussed by the council at the workshop that started at 6:00 PM this evening. So what we have are two vacancies. That's been explained. Is our goal to have a press release about this tomorrow, which will alert our local papers that we are gonna have a process and hopefully help us get the word out. It will be posted on our web page by Friday. There will be an application that will be, you can do it online, or you can call us and we'll mail you an application. The applications will be due by January 30. We're gonna ask the city attorney to review all of the applications for validity, that they've met the statutory requirements to be a council member in the City of Maplewood. We will then send out a spreadsheet with all the applications to the city council by February 4. The council will then return those to us by February 7. And what they will be doing is ranking the applications based on the questions that were included in those, on the applications. And then staff will notify the city council of the top four by January 8. There will be interviews on, February 8, sorry, interviews on February 11 at the workshop, and appointments on February 11 at the city council meeting.
And then the power play will be over.
And the power play will be over.
Okay. And then we will be back up and running at full strength.
Correct.
And we'll call, we don't know.
Okay. With that, let's move on to 2019 City Council Appointment to Boards, Commissions, and Miscellaneous Groups. Okay, please?
Mayor and council, we have, because of the, we do this actually every year, our boards, and I had to find the staff report, here we go. So the 2019 City Council Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and the other groups that we represent, our other partners in the region, we typically appoint certain city staff as staff liaisons, and we also appoint city council members to various organizations. We have seven spots that have been vacated because of Tu Jang and the mayor's leaving us for the Met Council. It's our recommendation, or it's my recommendation for your consideration, that we hold these over until we get all of our members here. And in the meantime, staff, or if you're going to the meetings, go to the meetings. If we need to cover them, staff can report back as the liaison to the council as to the activities. That's one suggestion. It's certainly your decision if you want to do some of the appointments tonight and wait on others, or if you want to wait until everybody's on board.
I have a question.
Councilmember Juneman?
What do we do about acting mayor? Because it rotates, and it would have rotated to, I think...
Mary Lee.
Mary Lee, and she can't be a mayor and acting mayor. So does it go to me then, because Tu's is, and then whoever's new will take my spot next year?
That is correct.
Or would it go to who gets appointed to Mary Lee's seat? Because it would have gone to that seat.
Yeah, but there'll be new...
I think it's based on...
Tu was acting mayor when he first started.
I prefer that we have experienced council members, at least as an acting mayor. It would be a little daunting for someone to come in as a council member and then have no experience and then serve as acting mayor as well.
I don't care, I just wanted to verify it.
Yeah.
So 2019 is me, and then...
You want to do it really, isn't it? I mean, it's up to them.
Yeah. Yeah, well, if that's true, can we go back over the last 20 minutes?
So then that would be Councilmember Juneman for 2019.
And then the new person would do 2020, right?
But should we, should we just leave things as is until we make that decision? And then go down the whole line of making that change once the new people are on?
I, just from an order standpoint, I think it's probably a good idea to have an acting mayor, just in case.
I think it's a good idea, right.
You can't make it, or something would happen.
Well, I could continue until we get the new slate together, if you want.
Let's have Kathleen serve as the acting mayor.
This year.
Yeah.
And then I'll be done.
For this year.
Then you won't be it again.
Then it's easy.
All right, I won't.
Okay. I think that's more efficient. It seems more efficient to me.
So we'll split that out from the rest of the appointments.
Yes.
Okay.
Staff has noted that.
Do we need to do anything formal?
Do you want a motion, or, do we need a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Then I'll move...
That we appoint Councilmember Juneman as acting mayor for the balance of 2019.
Second. Any discussion?
Do we need to say that we're tabling the rest of this, or not?
We'll get to that.
Okay. We can't do it all in one? I thought we could do it all in one, never mind.
But I didn't, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now on to the second part of the appointments. Is there a motion to table the rest?
I move that we table the balance of the appointments until which time we have a full, fully-staffed city council.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
What's that agenda?
The last, I think, isn't it the last thing that we've got tonight, is our consent agenda? No, we've got the calendar. We've got a few other things, small things.
Just the consent.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
There's only one I think we should highlight?
Calendar, which is on the consent.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to highlight number five, since we always do, and these people are what I would call repeat supporters.
Okay. Highlight number five. Any other comments on that? Okay. Councilmember Juneman?
I would like the chief to address it, if we could, please.
Mayor Abrams, council. We received a donation of $1,000 from Schmelz Country Volkswagen, countryside Volkswagen. And this is actually a collaborative effort that we're applying for a grant having to do with auto theft, and this is a collaboration with St. Paul's Mother Cities. And so we went to our auto dealers, and we solicited information from them on what they would like to see in this grant application, and told them that this was something that we wanted to work with them collaboratively, since they're such an important part of our business community. Schmelz, in the two years that I've been here, has donated money to public safety each year. This year, they earmarked that money for our street crimes unit, which is aggressively working on auto theft and theft from auto problems in our city. And so they sent a great letter of support for our grant application. They were great about working with us on the things that they wanted to see in our application. And again, just a very great community business, supporting Maplewood Public Safety and really giving us the capacity to do just a little extra in our community.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And in G4, do you suppose we should, is the council calendar for this year, we should just point out the two meetings that for sure are changed for the public's edification, shall we say? Do we want Ms. Sint to do that, or are we doing it?
That, if you want.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't think of the sooner.
It's okay. Mayor and council, every year, we, at the beginning of the year, we talk about all of our meetings, so we make sure that we're hitting all of the notice requirements. In 2019, the meetings are typically on the second and fourth Mondays, with the exception of moving the May 24 meeting to May 28 because of the Memorial Holiday.
May 27.
And, moving the May 27 meeting to May 28, and moving the November 11 meeting to November 12, and canceling the December 23 meeting. We do need a motion.
Thank you.
We need to approve it, I guess, as part of the consent.
I will move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have no public hearings, or unfinished business, new business, award of bids, and therefore we, is there anything else?
Make a quick comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to congratulate you. And I just want to say publicly that I am very happy for you. And I know this has been an awkward evening for the both of us, and not the least of which for Councilmember Juneman. And I am so blessed to be part of a team that can come together in a time like this, come together as both friends and rivals and colleagues, and go through a democratic process that's transparent and kind and respectful. So I'm looking forward to serving. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I want to commend my colleagues, too, that, you know, I think you said it in the newspaper, that in the short term, this has been awkward. It's been very difficult because we all have worked together for several years. But in the long range, I think that we, our city really stands to benefit from having Norris Slawick up at the Metropolitan Council and having Tu Jang up at our legislature. And I look forward to what is next, and to filling out the rest of the seats, and to moving on, and, yeah, and a good 2019. So thank you to my colleagues. Thank you. And we are adjourned. Good night.